At the, I always provide an update in terms of last council actions related to council, or community development. The city council did at their last meeting make awards for community development block grants, housing trust funds, and social service grants. The housing trust fund grants specifically were, the lion's share of it was to a nonprofit organization, Sunstone Housing Collaborative, that is looking at acquiring the property from the school district right across the street, the Ballfields from here, to develop housing on that property with the intention of having some affordable housing and then some family housing in order to increase student enrollment. So it's something the school district is looking at, the disposition of the public property to support that development. And the Housing and Human Services Commission and the city council granted funding from the community development block grant and the housing trust fund to support that effort. So that was the larger project. There was also a grant of, I think, $40,000 to go to a new organization that is requesting funds for capacity building for a new Ashland Community Land Trust organization to acquire property and essentially develop affordable housing while taking the cost of the land out of the equation. So, that is a recent council update. They did a lot more, but those were the community development items that we had on their agenda.
First item for discussion is discussion of changes proposed by the Development Process Management Advisory Committee, DP MAC. I was going to say that Commissioner Kunkaran is our representative for that commission, but she's not here with us this evening, so we'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I'll give you a little bit of background about the Development Process Management Advisory Committee. It was initiated by our former city manager who had heard comments from a economic roundtable in terms of the development process in Ashland and difficulties that individuals had in getting permit approvals and moving through the process. And so, it was his directive to convene a group of people familiar with the development process. And as such, we were fortunate to have, I believe, eight individuals, including architects, designers, SOU representative, as well as Commissioner Kunkaran, that all have participated in the project. So their charge was essentially to look at what efficiencies could be gained within the department as far as administrative efficiencies, really recognizing that community development staff would have more time to work more closely with individuals if there were some streamlined processes. So I'll touch on that in a moment. Another charge was to look at whether building code modifications were feasible that would facilitate development. And then the third was to look at land use requirements that can pose impediments to development. It's been an interesting process. They began meeting, I believe, in October, and met again in November, and then again in March, and will be meeting tomorrow evening for their fourth meeting. And at that meeting, a report will be presented that encapsulates everything that they've discussed. So once they've had an opportunity to review that draft and it's completed, it'll be provided back to this commission just for your adification and to the city manager as a report. The city manager has indicated that she'd like to bring that to the city council on May 20th, so we'll have a presentation at the council meeting that evening on it. So the process essentially in reviewing it before we go into the land use, one of the first steps they looked at was, we had conducted a survey of every, of 1,200 people that have pulled building permits or completed planning actions in Ashland since 2018 through December of 2022, and sent out mailed surveys to all of those, received 71 back, so not a good response rate, but provided an opportunity for people to fill out the survey, and it was done electronically online as well. And so with that, it provided a series of questions that were provided to the development community in 2011 and 2016, so that we could have direct comparables, questions in terms of how do you, you know, how receptive was the planning commission to your proposal, so some questions that are directly related to the planning commission. It's interesting that of the applications received, I think it was 93 or 97%, depending on the year, were approved. And yet, the feedback also spoke to the difficulty in getting through the planning process. So that was one of the first steps of looking at, what can we do to, you know, ameliorate some of those concerns. It also evaluated staff availability, and granted this period also coincides with COVID, so there was some restrictions on availability, but there were comments provided on both ends of the spectrum in terms of being pleasantly surprised and being dismayed in terms of the availability of staff. I know that subsequent to that, we've now opened our building five days a week from nine o'clock until three o'clock each day, so that was open hours that were not available when the survey was issued. So we'll provide that survey back to this commission as well, just because it's, it's interesting. The, one of the aspects of it that came out of the discussions at the first and second meeting was, are there ways that we can streamline the application process, not just for planning actions, but for building permits? And so the city has implemented a, what we call citizen self-serve, it's part of our website, part of our building permit software, rather, that allows building, builders and developers, applicants of any sort, to apply for a building permit online, apply for a planning action online, and provide all their submittals online. In terms of building permits, it is directly connected to our building permit software, so when we issue the permit, they get an email. When they want to call for an inspection, they can go onto the website and check the boxes that they want inspected. We did have two members on the DPAC, DP MAC, Development Process Management Advisory Committee, that were beta testers for this project, and were able to go through and provide feedback to April Lucas, our development coordinator, that helped refine the product, and it's now live. So, and we've had, I think, over 80 new registrants in the last month to use it. So it hopefully will streamline not just the customers' end in terms of requesting inspections and seeing the results of those immediately, but our end in terms of taking phone calls, logging it on an Excel sheet, providing it back to the inspector, and then at this point, the inspectors can all have all their scheduled inspections on an iPad out in the field. So, we've come full force into the 20th century and are now digital in that way, and accepting digital plan reviews as well. So that was kind of on the building side. We did look at a comparison of fees, which we'll include in the report that goes forward, between Ashland and other communities, you know, is their ability to, it doesn't really streamline the process to reduce fees, but that can be an impediment to development. And so, the group wanted to look at that, and we produced a comparison with, I think, 12 other communities around the state and what the fees are. And Ashland does, is higher than most of our adjacent neighbors, but much lower than the median for the state. So, we'll be able to provide that back to you as well. And then we move on to land use, which, you know, the memo outlines a number of potential modifications that came up through those discussions. Some of these amendments, such as tree removal permits, within the footprint of buildings, being switched to an administrative permit. We often see applications for a house on a vacant lot where a tree is in the location where the building footprint would be. Our code requirements, if it's a vacant lot and the tree's over six inches in diameter, has to apply for a tree removal permit. You guys don't see those typically, they're approved by staff, but we do send out notice to everybody within 200 feet, they have 10 days to comment, then we send out notice, again, saying that the planning department has approved this application, and you have 14 days to appeal that decision. And if no appeal is filed, then they can move forward with their building permit that they submitted. I think it was the perspective of a number of people on the group that, given that those are universally approved when they're within the footprint of the building, as one of the criteria outlined in the code, why is it a seemingly discretionary process soliciting public input? So that was one area where the thought was, it could be streamlined to make that an administrative decision without public notice. Yeah?
So I would, I would question taking away public notice, because I think neighborhoods get really upset when they aren't told things are going to happen. And if there's a big tree that everybody's seen for years and years and years, somebody's going to notice that it's just got cut down.
Right.
So, I would suggest that they're, maybe you just send out one of the notices, and you don't, maybe you just send out a notice that says, "It's approved unless you want to comment on it," or something like that. Sort of try to thread the needle at the best of both worlds.
I don't think it helps to notice, notice people, a tree is going to be removed if we're going to approve the removal, because it's the only place the home site could go, or it's just going to create more anxiety around the situation. And by my, as long as the appeal process for tree removal for, if it's within the building site of a home, is pretty weak for many neighbors, from my recollection. There's not much they could change, other than they can opine on it. And someone trying to get through the process of building a home on their site, we're not talking about trees that are in the line of a sidewalk or driveway, or those types of things where maybe modifications could be made, it's within the footprint of the home, is that correct?
Yeah, again, at this point, I should say that all of the ones that I'll go over aren't
Just proposed.
Really proposed at this point.
Yeah.
They are brought up as potentials to add to the list for change. So I think all the detail in terms of what qualifies and what doesn't would be part of that legislative review process and public hearing. So, but it would come to this body, most assuredly. So, your thoughts on whether or not it was something to spend staff time on and bring back will be valuable. I think, to your point about a tree that's not within the footprint of the, the building footprint, there are cases where a building footprint could be relocated to preserve a large stature tree. And so, I think that's why the code was drafted the way it was, and this would be a change from that, you know. But there are many cases where there aren't really alternatives, and it's a given that the tree, the lot is otherwise undevelopable unless the tree is removed.
But as I read this, it was specifically talking about, basically insignificant trees, right? Non-heritage, non-significant.
And so, significant trees are defined as trees that are, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, 18 inches in diameter or greater at breast height. And I kind of recall it was 12 for deciduous and 18 for evergreen. And non-heritage trees, there is a provision in our code to define a tree as a heritage tree, but I'll say that I've not seen any private property owner come forward in many, many years and request that their tree be identified as a heritage tree because of the
Right.
Code stipulations. Okay.
My read of this is that, why waste staff time analyzing trees that have already been defined as non-meaningful? You know, I mean, love my trees, but...
I'm just speaking up for the citizens out there, and the neighbors that in years past, I've seen come unglued because a tree came down and they weren't told.
Yeah, I, you know, I concur with, not the unglued part, but the neighborhood concern that we'll often hear, even after a tree removal permit has been approved and is final, that once that tree comes down, or people are out there cutting it, we'll start getting phone calls from nearby property owners that were unaware. So, you're right, I think we do all appreciate trees in our neighborhood, and that's why the tree ordinance was drafted as a tree preservation effort. But it did stipulate between significant and, on a vacant property, the intention was that there, you may have groups of trees that, although less than the 18 inches in diameter, could be consolidated in an open space if that property was further subdivided. It used to be that you could remove trees on any property with a single-family home on it, and so we would see cases where, prior to a development proposal, all trees would be removed from the site, and then that single-family home would be partitioned off to create. So we've changed the code over a number of years to ensure that there aren't loopholes like that, and this would be, in a sense, going to a point where less trees are regulated. They're still required to have a demonstration that it would be in the footprint of a building. You know, another aspect to this that I don't know is covered in this memo is, is the next item, is the removal of emergency or hazard trees, that currently those go through the same process. And, you know, an emergency tree is clearly, you know, in the process of falling, we grant immediate approval with that without notice. The same is not true for a hazard tree or a diseased tree, and there has been some concern that if it is a arborist evaluation and determination that a tree is, you know, for instance, has beetle bark, do we need notify the neighborhood, provide that notice and appeal period while that tree is continuing to pose a risk to the trees nearby? So, again, there's, it's always two sides of a coin in terms of the value. But that's one where, you know, in terms of diseased trees, sometimes it's prudent to take the tree out as soon as you've identified that it has a disease that could spread. And a 24-day notice period may not seem like much, but it could mean that you end up taking on more trees than, than one.
I've been in that experience with a dead tree that was more than 14 feet, more than 14 inches at breast height, and we had to go through, the process seemed like it was 30 days for review, appeal, and the ultimate decision came back to, was, it was okay to remove the tree, and you just have to replace it with a light-kind tree somewhere on the property that you identify and show where it is and what you've done to it. It just seemed like, it was a, it was a tree that was leaning and had died both over a commercial property on, next to SISQI Center. And so, the process just seemed ridiculous for, a tiny bit of it was alive on the edge, you know, and the rest of it was, was dead.
I know there's an exemption in our code for a tree that's dead, but, so it would...
The arborist said, it was
It's as good as dead.
It's as good as dead, but it was, you're right, there is a tiny little bit that was still hanging on.
Yeah. So those are some things that, go ahead.
Just to pick up on Lisa's point then, is, was there consideration, rather than having it be a binary situation, no communication, lots of communication, of a different way of communicating?
Not through the Development Process Management Advisory Committee. They were really identifying issues, not really the final legislative process. And so, just outlining potential things to look at. And so, there was no discussion in terms of creating a new public notice process. But it's something that if this did come back for a code amendment, certainly something that could be discussed.
We could talk about a halfway process.
Yeah.
So I had a general question of how the areas for discussion were selected and prioritized.
So they've not been prioritized.
Okay, sorry.
But as far as selection, some were forwarded by staff, some were brought up by members of the committee. However, you know, I think that that might be experience-based from the committee members as well, the kind of projects that they came up against and saw areas for improvement. I think if we'd had a different pool of developers or architects or builders, we might have had some other items added to the list. And I will say that this isn't finalized. Again, they're meeting tomorrow, they're looking at refining it and making other recommendations. But, so some staff I know that forwarded, we forwarded, for instance, the number of units served off a private drive, potential solar ordinance amendments for inter parcel shading, and planning action extensions, I know are some that we come up against quite a bit and have brought forward as potential changes that could be looked at.
Well, in saying prioritize, I meant prioritize to get attention.
Recording in progress.
The same as selected.
Recording stopped.
Sorry.
Okay. And, and I, you know, it was interesting to see some things that we have seen as case studies, even in my short time on the commission. What I found interesting was that there was very little related to what I would say I've observed as the number-one development issue in Ashland, which is affordable housing. So that's why, you know, that's part of the root of my question, because sometimes, you know, you go into an analytical process, you know, with a way of looking at things, but you lose, you know, you lose something along the way if you're looking at everything individually and in, on its own merits, if there's a bigger issue kind of waiting in the wings. And I'm not saying that's what happened here, but it seems to me, I'm on another strategic planning initiative where I see that all over the place, because they kind of lost the, the forest for the trees.
Yeah, I will note that their charge did not include looking at ways to promote or increase affordable housing. It was really looking at streamlining development process. So in terms of, you know, we have the housing production strategy that outlines 15 strategies to address affordable housing, but this committee didn't pick that up and say which of those should move forward, or do any kind of prioritization. So you're right about that.
That was their mandate, to look for workflow improvements, basically.
Right. So some of the others, as Susan mentioned, Commissioner Crackenchain mentioned, that there are items that have come before this commission as concerns, namely, we've had applications in terms of steep slopes on individual properties. You know, how are those still slopes created? If there is a way by a geotech can make a determination early in the process that it was from onsite earthmoving and is de minimis in nature, and again, I think the legislative constraint process in defining those things would be vital. Would that then require a physical environmental constraint, just because that mound is over 35% slope? So, the other one that hasn't come before you, but is of interest, is the number of units that are allowable within a subdivision process. Currently, you're familiar with the two-step process, the outline plan for developments that are 10 lots or less, and they go through an outline plan and a final plan concurrently. If it's 11 lots, then they have to go through a outline plan, provide back further engineering, and then do a final plan. This was brought up and discussed at the committee, namely because we do allow things like cottage housing developments to go up to 12 units, which typically include 12 residential lots and a common space, and it is then by definition put into that two-step process, which adds a month or more, depending on the applicant's timeline to put together those materials in between the outline and final. So I think this was a effort to see if that could be streamlined and make it a one-step process for 12 residential lots, and look at that term residential, so that common, open space areas or common parking lots wouldn't count against that number.
So, so you're essentially talking about going from 10 units to 12 units?
From 10 lots to 12 units, yeah.
10 lots to 12 lots?
To 12 residential lots. So you could have 13 lots or 14 lots, and
A common lot.
12 of them could be buildings with single units on them, and one lot could be a common open space, another lot could be a parking lot, and those non-residential lots would not count against that threshold. So again, it's, it's a nuance, but one that might save an applicant doing a cottage housing development a bit of time. So the, this code provision, private drive serving, a private drive or street serving a number of lots, we've had a couple of applications over the years to get a variance to the number of units that could be served off a private drive. And I mentioned this is one that staff brought forward, that if that is something that could be codified, what the criteria are, what is required, that that limitation may not be as applicable as it was when it was drafted, if we are often in a position of granting variances. But, that's on that.
So, what happens to, doesn't that include, doesn't that increase the areas where there are not sidewalks, not parking strips, not maybe as wide a street as normal?
It could, yeah.
I mean, it would seem to me that allowing more lots off, more, off a substandard street is just going to increase the ruralness of Ashland.
Yeah. So the...
But again, my vote on a prior circumstance was an indication of my concern about us basically setting policy, as opposed to having policy defined, so.
Yeah, and that's through the variance process, what you're doing, but if there was any legislative amendment to the land use code, the planning commission is a recommending body on, so you would review the code, make a recommendation to city council to adopt or amend, and in which case, then that would be the new standard that would apply. And that's true for every one of these items that we're talking about. It isn't something that staff or a planning commission in isolation could implement, requires council approval. So the solar ordinance amendments for intra parcel shading, again, this is one that I don't have a clear approach in terms of what would be appropriate in terms of modifying the standard. It just has, time and again, come up in terms of a subdivision, is there greater allowances within the subdivision to shade up the wall of the northern unit? You know, our code stipulates pretty clearly, solar standard A, that stipulates how far back you have to be set from the property line for a shadow-producing height, depending on the grade of the property, which you guys are familiar with with applications that we've reviewed. Again, variances to the solar ordinance have been granted for lots within the subdivision, but not over the northern property line of the parent parcel. So again, I think the Development Process Management Advisory Committee saw this as something that if there were greater allowances for intra parcel shading within the subdivision, that that would provide more flexibility in terms of development.
So, this would allow more shading on the walls of the adjacent house, or does it get into shading on the roof?
So I think that would be defined, but one thing that could be looked at is, you know, for instance, in the cottage housing ordinance, we created an allowance in that ordinance that they could shade the neighboring proper, neighboring building to the north within the cottage housing development, provided they did not shade the roof. You could also stipulate only so far up the northern wall of the house to the north, in order in order to maintain ambient light coming in for passive solar. Again, there's ways to address it, which applicants have typically come forward with their solution as a variance request, and then that's reviewed and approved or denied.
But to make sure I'm understanding this, since it's intra development, it's, it's not affecting the neighboring properties, but within a development, quite frankly, if one unit has more shade and, then maybe the market dynamics of the value of that unit would take care of the situation rather than having the design be overly impacted by the requirements. Is that a fair statement?
I think it's a fair statement. I think the, the initial codification of a solar ordinance was a conservation measure to try and preserve solar access, not just for energy production off the roof, which is something that could be maintained, but also passive solar light coming through the windows. And obviously, if you have a two-story building six feet away from your one-story building windows, that's going to block all light coming into the building, and that's, you know, again, just a dynamic in terms of it impacts both market value but also energy conservation. So that's one of those balances that would have to be evaluated. The example that comes to mind, which you're all familiar with, is 822 Oak Street, and that project is now approved by this commission, and the appeal period is over, so we can talk about it, where there was four lots off the end of the private drive off of Oak Street, and the three southern lots all requested a solar waiver in order to cast four feet up the wall of the building to their north. The fourth lot, on the northernmost part, could not obtain a solar waiver from the property owner to the north who's outside of that parcel, and as such, they are subject to solar standard A. So, you know, my thoughts on this intra parcel would likely be the same thing, that the city would go through the process of defining, under what circumstances, how much more shading could be allowed within the subdivision that's proposed without impacting the existing rights for properties to the north. It's not to say the city couldn't revisit the entirety of it, but that is a salutational change as opposed to addressing these infill lights, infill lots that might have more constraints.
But you made an important point that I hadn't really thought of, is, you know, having lived in places where this was, let me say, the development was less managed, that there is, there's the part that is the development and therefore is probably taken care of by market factors, but then there's the public good of having, having, you know, a development that, that is better for the, you know, better for the environment, less energy consuming, et cetera, thinking of the video that we'll get to, you know, building cities that are more sustainable in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other items on this list, you know, most are largely addressed, I mean, planning application expiration extension isn't really a land use, except for, you know, I know that Commissioner Nowar indicated that when a project is approved, that we should have some expectation that they will move forward in a short amount of time, and that a approval isn't a, you know, lifelong approval for the site, that it does have a terminus period by which they'd have to reapply. Currently, we do have applicants that apply for an extension, and then the question being is whether a 18-month allowance with a 24-month extension, is that what's current, is appropriate, or it could be reversed to 24-month allowance with an 18-month extension, which would buy developers six more months of ability to get their project underway. So it really comes to a head, as it were, when we have larger scale economic changes. I know 2008, 2009, those two years with the recession meant that every project needed an extension, and then all of those extensions expired. So subsequent to that, we changed it from 12 months and 12 months to 18 months and 24 months. You know, so again, it's been addressed once previously, it's just one that was brought up as an issue that could be looked at. The commercial to residential conversions, as you guys know, under recent legislative process at the state level, the conversion of ground floor commercial into residential is now outright permitted, so that in some way addresses this concern, but it doesn't necessarily mean that a increase in the amount of area dedicated to residential could be permitted outright. So essentially, one of the questions that we have is, under our existing land use, if you have a proposal to do a, or let's say you have an existing commercial building, and you want to convert the ground floor into residential use, does that trigger a site review to ensure that any modifications meet our current site review standards? With an existing building, it's probably already set, so it's less of a concern, but if somebody was proposing to do exclusively residential on a commercial lot, which has happened, as you know, our site review requirements apply. Is there the potential, if it's an affordable housing development on commercial land, does it have to go through site review? That's really the question. So again, not one I have an answer to, but just positing, in case you have any thoughts or concerns on it.
Well, since we just undertook such a review, I think it turned out positively, so I would say let's continue it.
So part of what we might need to do is look at the site review standards as it relates to residential, because our site review standards for commercial, you could build lot line to lot line, is that, I guess that could be done for a residential development. If on a hypothetical one acre lot, if somebody was to do four single-family homes on four lots, that may be compatible with the neighborhood, or alternatively, they could come in and build a 20,000 square foot apartment complex on that commercial property all the way to the lot lines without any parking, and it would be theoretically in compliance with our site review standards. So I think that's kind of the gray area that we're moving into with state legislative changes that allow uses that weren't previously considered in our code. The last one I have on here is, shouldn't be the most contentious but probably would be, in terms of fences within Ashland are a, always a point of interest, and we currently require anybody to get a fence or to replace a fence, or if it's a substantial repair to a fence, to get a fence permit. It's a $31.25 permit, where they come in and present a plan showing where the fence will be located, and a elevation of that fence if it is including deer fencing, so that we can calculate that the deer fencing portion is 80% opacity through it. And so as part of that process, again, we have the value of being able to affirm to the applicant that the fence they're proposing complies with our code. We issue a permit, they go build it, staff goes out and inspects it and makes sure that it meets those height requirements, and we don't survey the property to make sure it's on their property. Sometimes that ends up being an issue when the fence is actually built, but for the most part, the process currently works well, but it is a somewhat timely process both for an applicant and for the city to process those permits and conduct onsite inspections. We've kept the price of those permits low as a means of encouraging people to get fence permits, whereas if the price was commensurate with the amount of time that it takes for review and onsite inspections, it would probably be to a point where many, many more people would choose to build fences without permits. City of Grants Pass is one city locally that does not require fence permits, but requires that they, all fences meet their standards, which are still contained in the code, so then it becomes a code compliance issue if a fence is built out of compliance, that they are not visited by a planner, but by a code compliance officer to correct the fence, and make it shorter would typically be the issue. So again, that's one that really doesn't fall into, you know, promoting any particular land use, it's more of a issue in terms of streamlining resources, staff time.
So do you think it would be fewer staff resources to put this under code compliance?
Yes, I, I think so. You know, I, it, with every fence going through a fence permit, and Derek could speak better than I, but I think fences and signs are probably two of the more time-intensive from our department to process. We do receive complaints about fences being too tall, and then go out now as code compliance and deal with those. And I'm also aware that many people are unaware of our fence permit requirement and build fences that are perfectly in compliance and we don't hear about. So, you know, if we do hear about a fence being installed without a permit, again, it's back, at this point, a code compliance outreach to that property owner and say, come in, show us a plan for the fence, fence, pay your $31, we'll inspect the fence, and we'll put that in the file so that your neighbors know that you did get a fence permit, typically the neighbor that called in the issue that the fence was put up without a permit. So, yeah, it probably would shift some of the responsibility to code compliance, but probably not as much time spent.
And the other issue time-wise is, you issue permits and they never call for an inspection, so you have a bunch of permits in our system that aren't resolved, that we then have to go through and either call and try to schedule an inspection after the fact when the property's changed hands, or, or they're just sitting there kind of gumming up the system.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
What about, and I know it's just pure discussion at this point, but a hybrid of that, you have to get a permit, and we close it out automatically after 12 months, and then it becomes code compliance, there's no inspection. If, you know, the honest person said, this is what I'm going to do, and, and got you to approve it, right, because they were a little confused, or our wording wasn't quite exact, or they're not used to building fences, and so they showed you the design and everything, and the $35 just went to like, okay, here's your permit, build it accordingly, and we'll let code compliance sweep it up at the end if there's a problem, and every 12 months we just take it out of the system, it's...
Yeah, it would be more expeditious than the follow-up inspection and the request for inspection and...
Making sure the dog's locked up before you go out there and check it out, or whatever.
Yeah, it's a very bad form to walk onto someone's property and inspect without their presence also, and sometimes that's hard to schedule for people that work the same hours that we work.
I think, I think it's a great comment, because it goes to the, the fundamental question, is it, when you look at the process, is it value-added? Does that, does that last step, does it add value or not, and what is the value? And if it, and if, on any, and this goes to any process, if it doesn't add value, then the question is, can we make it leaner by not doing that? So, good comment.
That may be an amendment that could be done without actually a code amendment, because that is a process, an administrative process for the inspection that planning does, and is, but it's not codified under the fence ordinance that an inspection occur, I don't believe.
I know from, you mentioned signs also, sign permits and getting those approved, it's very similar kind of process, but what it does is, it holds those contractors that do that work to the code, because, you know, it's their name going down and applying for the, the permit, and if they were constantly, you know, not designing according to the, the, our, our rules, then we can suspend them, or we can give them, you know, reprimand them in some way, make it more difficult to...
You know, you have them remove the sign that they just spent a lot of money on installing, so that's probably the greatest reprimand for that sign manufacturer, because now their client is holding them responsible for making something that didn't meet the requirements, so.
And I've put signs in before, I've had, I've hired contractors to put signs in before, and they, this is one thing they noted, they noted was like, okay, well, in Ashland, we gotta do it a little different than we do it in Medford, we actually have to submit a permit and make sure that it meets the guidelines, we just can't put in what you drew up here and gave us, and so it was, you know, just a check and balance.
Yeah, and our Ashland sign code probably differs also in that the code has different areas of application, so our National Register Historic Districts have requirements that you can't use plastic as part of the sign, that's probably one that sign manufacturers wrestle with the most, that they have to make it out of metal or wood, or, you know, some other material, which is unusual if they're used to mass-producing signs for other communities all out of plastic, so. Yeah, so, you know, that one's not on this list, because, you know, preservation of those historic interest areas, our sign code is one component of that, and I don't know that there's an appetite for making no sign permits required, because otherwise, it'd look like Riverside going down. So that was really, Ed, I do know that, you know, each of these changes would require careful consideration and modifications, and just to be frank, the city long-range planning division, namely myself and Derek to some extent, are largely working on other climate-friendly areas and, you know, the economic opportunity analysis and other projects, manufactured home ordinance, manufactured park ordinance, we did receive a grant from DLCD to move forward with consultant services on that, so we're going to have three projects moving concurrent at the same time, so if there is interest in these, it will be later, but it's useful for the group to put forth where they see changes could be made.
Chair, I'd have one question.
Sure.
Inappropriate amount of time, between you and Derek, would it be possible to get back some type of estimate on how much time you think just each one of these would save you if it was, if it was changed to something favorable? We don't, the details haven't been figured out, but like, you know, the tree removal thing, yeah, might save us two hours a year, and, but, but this other one might, the fence one might save us 40 hours a year, just a ballpark, just so we can add order of magnitude to making priorities.
Yeah, I think it's something that, you know, if we're moving forward, these definitely provide that analysis. It might be difficult to, because a single fence permit may take three to eight hours of staff time, just because of that property owner having eight hours' worth of questions. So I don't know that we have a estimate for each of the types, but it's something that we could put our, our brains together and think about how we would be able to quantify whether they really would streamline our development process internally and free up time to focus on, you know, larger projects.
Yeah, just order of magnitude. You know, we have 50, 50 fence permits a year, we think this could save around an hour to two hours each, there's 100 hours, just that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, and building on that as a thought, a fairly standard way of doing that in change management processes is, that I'm experienced in anyway, is, you know, you look at both the time-saving element or resource-saving element, and maybe it's low, medium, and high is good enough, but also on the ability to implement.
Right.
Low, medium, and high, and that can be really, you know, really helpful to sort things through.
Well, good points.
And here I was going to say, we don't want to see it back. Okay, let's move on.
If you're interested in following this process, again, it will be before the city council on May 20th, and by then there'll be the formal report, which we can release, I'm expecting we can release it on May 6th, so.
Yeah, if you could just give us the, the report in our packet as an add-on or something, that'd be good.
Yeah, I think it's interesting just in terms of the survey, questions, responses, narrative responses as well. It really does give insight as to how our department interacts with the public and how they feel about that, so.
Yeah, that's good to know, yeah.
And just to piggyback on your comments, Susan, I've seen that analysis done in a really simple way, where you've got an X and a Y axis, and you put impact on one, and then effort on the other.
one, and then effort on the other. And then you can quickly get a sense for how much impact based on how much or little effort, just a real quick way to diagram that. Or laypeople that don't want to look at a big chart of numbers, or whatever.
Okay, so let's move on to our second discussion item, which is a discussion of the video entitled Smart Cities Toward a New Model for Urban Communities, which I sent to you, because I listened to it, looked at it as part of my MIT alum stuff. And I thought it was really interesting. I thought there were a couple interesting points in there, one of which was about zoning. So first of all, I guess we need to figure out, has everybody looked at this video? Okay. Okay, good. Start. So I can start out with the part that I thought was interesting. Should we do that? And then if you have comments, you can chime in. Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. So what I found interesting was Kent Larson went through seven different journeys, he called them. And the number seven journey was new rules for low-carbon entrepreneurial communities. And he said zoning was the under-recognized platform that people could use. And he talked about plazas. The Seagram's Building in New York was designed out of the blue with a plaza, and it caused a rewrite of the zoning code about 10 years later, so that they, in, they added incentives for more developers to add plazas and sunlight and all those good things. And I thought that was notable, not only because you got sunlight, but this is a different way of looking at zoning. And it brought up the idea, I think, to Kent and his team about having incentives. And he, he talked about, their next step then was to look at incentive, look at a variety of incentives for a variety of things that they wanted to accomplish. Things like affordable housing and stuff like that. So, and then he talked about dynamic equity sharing, which was the idea of, if you have so much additional value on top of, there's standard buildings here, and you get so much additional value here because you put in a plaza, because you made the building footprint smaller, are there other things you can do to get more equity and add to the building? And if you, if, and so he showed some schematic where, that it was dynamic in that if you put in affordable housing, you got so much additional incentives, but then the next guy down the road, if he put in, he would, if he put in affordable housing, he wouldn't get as much incentives, because you already had some affordable housing, you were already meeting the need for affordable housing. But if he put in senior housing, then he could get maybe a commensurate amount of the original additional value through an incentive. And so that they, so that the incentives were changing as an area developed, and, but you still get, you, overall, when you, when the whole place was developed, and you, you, the idea would be that you have what you wanted. You have senior housing, you have affordable housing, you'd have a variety of things there. And then he talked about dynamic equity sharing, which was the idea that if there's, if there's an increase in value, maybe it's tied to the community, and somehow the community helped decide how much new density was allowed. And in return for that, the community got some part of that equity as a benefit for itself. Maybe you got, and he was talking about, you might get a piece of the equity, or a share of the endowment, according to your proximity to the project, to how much time you have in the community, to a financial need, to how many volunteer hours you put in, whether you lived and worked in, in the district, and various stuff like that. So I thought that whole idea of electives and incentives, maybe something that we can play with here in Ashland. I'm not sure we're going to get 50 or 60-story buildings, but, but maybe we could scale it down, and the incentive benefit could be more square footage, either on top of a building, or on, across the site, something like that.
It reminds me of the, the solar co-op concept here in Ashland. So that, he talks later in the video about sharing equity ownership, and it just was a further discussion of, of that topic. And I'm, I'm not sure how you operationalize that, how you really make that work. The only thing that came to my mind was that this solar co-op idea, that's been floating around for maybe four years-ish, three, four years.
And what is that idea?
Basically, it's where people invest in a, a solar array, so the capital, the capital improvement, that is a, a new solar array. The, the investment that, that drives that improvement is from people that buy into this cooperative. And then, then they have a, a share of the benefit that comes from the electricity that's produced by the, by the array.
Okay.
It, it's been-
It's been talked about here in Ashland?
Yeah, for, for a couple of years now. I don't know that it's gotten a lot of traction, but, yeah, it, I, I could go on more about that, but I'd prefer not to.
Okay. Any, anybody else have any comments?
I have some, but I-
Go for it.
Kind of related to that, I found it interesting how he critiqued high-tech solutions and then got into these very complicated optimization strategies. Let me just say that. But there were a lot of interesting thoughts in it. I mean, I thought the food production near the point of consumption is something that is kind of practiced here and in, embedded in the urban growth boundaries notion, to me, to a large extent. And, but, you know, maybe taking that thought a little bit further and a little bit more literally might be interesting for us. Zoning and taxes, as you mentioned, being the strongest levers to pull. So some things that are sort of good old, good old days still are, are very effective and very meaningful. You know, one thing I thought about is that Ashland, I think, is in a fairly unique situation, overall, due to the degree of control and autonomy that it has over its infrastructure.
Having the electricity department?
The electric, the fiber, you know, that is, you know, that's one of those things that, again, over the years, has come and gone in urban settings. But when you want to effect change, the more that you control, the more that, the easier it is to change in general, which makes me a little bit proud of where Ashland is in that regard, because it takes a lot of work and effort to have that degree of control and not just sign your infrastructure away to others. The fact, the point he made about actions to reduce carbon dioxide can also be ones that improve the economics and quality of life. Didn't spend a lot of time on that equation, but did make the point that, you know, you're not cutting off your nose to spite your face all the time to get to a more, you know, a more, something that meets multiple objectives at once, and isn't just serving climate-friendliness, but not serving economics at the same time. However, I must say, I did find his throwaway comments about technology companies base, what was the word he used? Smarter Cities was invented by a technology company. It was not invented by the IBM Media Lab. So that's just a small comment in the middle of that. But, you know, sometimes when you throw a throwaway comment in the meaning, in the middle of something that is quite meaningful, you know, you alienate part of your audience, you know, in the process of doing that. And maybe it's a lesson to us all, but it, you know, it wasn't the Media Lab, which I used to sit right across the hallway from them for four years, that invented smart cities, and then the technology companies came along and said, no, we know how to do it better. It was the other way around. Just, I found interesting. But it was nice to go to, back to kind of in, an hour of intellectualism, if nothing else.
Yeah.
So thank you for that, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I appreciated you sharing the video. I thought it was great. And it was, I'll just share one observation. The, during the Q and A, when they started talking about the global decarbonizing issue or, or process, and, and that cities are 67% to 73% of emissions, it really brings home the potential impact that we can have. That's my only comment.
Did they mention what percentage of population is in there? Because if it's 90% of the population and it's 70%, I mean-
I think, I think at the beginning, there was some comment about, urban centers are 90% of the wealth creation and 70% of the global emissions.
Yeah, which says to me that cities are pretty efficient.
No, no, I, I wouldn't read it that way. I think it's a jump. I, I think there's a really good, there's a really good book called Drawdown, that, that researched and articulates the most impactful strategies for, for decarbonizing. So it's a, it's a great read. And I think it is probably more insightful with regard to where the juice is worth the squeeze.
Now, to follow up on Chair Werner's comment about the dynamic equity sharing, the comment made in the video about a way to address NIMBYism, it's really the first approach that I've heard that really tries to address opposition to projects by making the neighbors a investor in the project, which is a unique and, I thought, innovative approach. Operationally, I don't know how you structure such a thing. You know, a developer could do that now, and approach neighbors and say that we'd like you to be a, have a share in this project. But really, I think, you know, from a land use code side, how you could create a system by which you obligate a developer to provide a percentage of ownership in their project would be very hard, if not illegal. I'm not sure how you would, not, that not constitute a taking of someone's property. But it's definitely an innovative strategy. And just one thing that I really liked was, and I probably have a particular lens watching it, of how much our climate-friendly area concepts fall into line with much of what was being discussed, with the exception of the micro-units that are highly technical, technologically adaptive, which is very fun and exciting to see how you could use small space well. I imagine the price per square foot goes up quite a bit. I think he mentioned $25,000 in add-on, but I don't know if that would cover all the sliding walls and the roof and the drop, drop-down bed.
And just because IKEA is involved, doesn't mean it's going to be cheap either.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it means the instructions will be very-
Oh, sit to it yourself.
Anybody else have anything? Any comments? Okay. And then we have a for the information only Senate Bill 1537 legislative update, which we're not going to talk about.
That was really just following up on the discussion we had about the state laws. And once we'd had that discussion, DLCD came with, out with that analysis. So just thought it'd be worth having that as a follow-up.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. There's a lot of information, a lot of changes coming down the, the pipe.
Okay. Anybody have anything for open discussion? No? Okay.
So I have one question, you know. As we come across things like this video, or interesting articles and so forth, that might be interesting and useful to share, you know, particularly case studies and things like that from outside, what's the right process for that? Send them to you, and you're the filter?
Oh, I think if you send it to me to distribute to the commission, we'll include it in your packet. If you'd like to have it be a discussion item, maybe reaching out to Chair Werner and seeing if that's something that can be included on the agenda. But definitely any information that you want to distribute to the full commission, we'll include in the packet.
Isn't there a public meeting process or requirement where information sent to, to a quorum of commissioners electronically then constitutes a public meeting? Isn't there a-
Yeah, I was referring to including it in the packet for your regular meeting, which then is publicly available, and everybody has the opportunity to, to review.
Okay. Because I did send an article about, that was a case study about a city in New Jersey, so maybe you didn't catch that recently? I think I sent it to you. I know I sent it to you. I don't know if I sent it to you concurrently, so.
I hope not, but I'm not recalling it.
Yeah, I think, I think the more the merrier. If people have things of interest to share, I think it's good to-
I will find that article, and it'll be in your-
Okay. Maybe I sent it from my business email, and it got, yeah, and it got screened out by accident, but, okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned.
And I'll reach out to IT and get our staff to have a training on how to operate the audio/video in this building.